I guess we need to amend that.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir.
That goes under this thing.
You said new business, right?
Yeah.
New business. Well...
After consent of agenda? No, where is that?
We just need to... We need to approve the agenda.
Where else to approve?
And he don't have it on? Is that not me? For citizens' time.
Roger, you ready to get started?
Michelle said she'd like to be ready to be done early.
All right, bring the board back into session. Do I have a motion to bring back in from closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we come back from closed sessions into open session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
And yes.
All right. All right, do I have a motion? So certifying that we talked about what we said we would?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we certify executive session. We entered into executive session on three categories, and that was the only thing we discussed while in executive session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So move.
Motion and a second. In discussion. All right, we'll start with you, Bob.
I vote yes.
Dr. Littrell?
I so certify.
Robbie?
So certified.
I so certify. Phillip?
Yes.
Joe?
Certified.
All right. Now, if I can get Robbie to do the pledge and invocation.
It's all right. Hey, my father, we come before you this afternoon thanking you for this day and for this opportunity together, together. We thank you for each and every one of the citizens that are here. We thank you for each one of the board members that are here. Lord, we just ask that you watch over us and bless each and every one of us. Keep us mindful of our duties and keep us focused on you. Lord, we ask that you especially watch over those that are sick and shut in and ill and are seeking needs that lots of times only you can contribute to. Lord, we just thank you once again, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Seems like it's going to be a pretty good meeting. I need a motion to approve the agenda, and I think there's a couple of things that need to be added. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve agenda with those additions?
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we, under new business, add a resolution. We need to approve.
And does that include approving the agenda as well?
Yeah, and add that and approve the agenda.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Start with you, Joe?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Bob?
And vote yes.
Okay. That brings us up to citizens' time. If you notice, there's a slight difference in the... How we do it, conducting the meeting, and so we're starting with citizens' time here. I only have four people. Bill Baldwin?
Yes, sir.
Could you step forward, please, and address the board?
Right here?
Yes.
I guess I'm here going to have a few of these folks up here. We came tonight to talk about the accidents that are occurring in front of our homes at what we would consider a tremendous rate. Unfortunately, the last two, people have lost their lives. Thank God it wasn't one of us, but Lord knows it's going to be one of us soon.
Would you tell us where this is located?
Sure. Right there at the Thaddeus Hill crossroads. The speed limit through there is 55 mile an hour. There's 11 homes, I believe there's 11 homes, through there from the crossroads on down towards the trucking company there. The posted speed limit is 55 mile an hour. However, many years ago, when the county came in and bought that property to expand the highway, and they bought, I guess, what would have been the front yards there to expand that highway to a four lane, they left our front doors, I want to say no more than 30 feet from the white line. Maybe 35 feet. I haven't measured it, but I'm telling you, it can't be much more than 35 feet from my front door to the white line with cars going by at a posted speed limit of 55 mile an hour. Everybody sitting in this room knows that that's not true. They're doing at least 60, sometimes 70 mile an hour coming through there. When the XL truck hit the home, my wife, Ms. Ruth Baldwin here, she called senators, she called politicians, probably called some of y'all's. I don't know. I don't have my glasses. Can't really see the names. And VDOT, everybody else. When the XL truck, I don't know if y'all remember the XL truck that literally parked inside our neighbor's house. Thank God the old feller had passed away a few months earlier, and the home was empty. But it's a pretty horrible, horrifying sight for your kids to see an XL tractor trailer parked inside of a home two houses down from yours. Not to mention that sometime before that, in that gentleman's house, David, Pepsi truck hit his house not too long before that and wasn't quite parked in the house, but ran up into your home. Is that correct?
The truck was in the house.
Truck was in the house. Parked inside the man's home. That's two. There was a little old feller in a pickup truck that had an accident there. Every time, the first thing they hit was my mailbox, except for this last feller. First thing he hit was my truck. I don't know how he got between my truck and my mailbox, but he did. And I could talk here for all night, guys. I could stand up here and talk all night. I really can. I just don't, for the life of me, I cannot understand, if it's a residential area, there's 11 homes through there, why that speed limit has to be 55 mile an hour. When the XL truck hit, my wife raised all that cane. They come out and they put a few, a couple of little rumble strips on the upside of Thaddeus Hill, and then they put a suggested speed limit of 35 mile an hour. Now, here's what's interesting about that. From McDonald's down through to my house, there may be four, five, six crossroads that you get to before you get to the Thaddeus Hill crossroad. The speed limit there is 45, or 55 miles an hour as well. Those houses are well off the road, but at every crossroad, there's a suggested speed limit. That suggestion is 45, so it's only 10 miles an hour lower than the actual speed limit. But they're asking them now to drop down 20 miles an hour once they come up over that hill and are in our house. Don't make sense to me. If they're dropping it 10 miles an hour there, 35 should be the suggested speed limit, but they need to drop that speed limit to 45 mile an hour, then with a suggested speed limit of 35 for the residential area. So there's really three things that we would like to see. We would like to see a flashing light at Thaddeus Hill. Understand that you might not want to put a full-fledged red light in there. Again, you'd have to convince me why you wouldn't do that, but I understand. A flashing light, you can see a flashing light from Harmon's if it's up on that hill. That's going to get, start getting people's attention all the way from Harmon's, regardless if they never drove through there, whatever. They're going to see a flashing light, and all of a sudden, they're going to say, oh, something's going on up here. Let me slow down a little bit. And then as they come up through there, if the speed limit is down to 45 with that light flashing, then at least we're going to get people paying attention to what they're doing. We'd also like to see rumble strips on the downside of the hill. So when they crest that hill, because they're mashing the gas pedal to get up the hill. Once they crest the hill, the vehicle just automatically excels. And now they're doing, you know, if they're doing 55 by pressing the gas pedal to crest the hill, once they crest it and that car, whatever vehicle starts to take off, they're at 65 to 70 like that. I mean, when they pass, there has been, we've been there just for six years. There's been five accidents that literally started at my mailbox. Again, with two people losing, like, that's not even to mention the accidents at Thaddeus Hill. There's been at least another dozen of those. Am I right, guys? I mean, I don't know what we have to do, folks. I really don't know. Outside of one of us losing our lives and suing somebody, I mean, I don't know what else we have to do. Mr. Burrows, who's a news reporter for the Carroll County News, came out and talked to my wife and I and did a nice article where I was a little bit more free. I was in my living room. I said a few more things that I like to say. I suggest you guys read that. It's a great article. Ironically, his son is my next-door neighbor. So he has a vested, he's got investment in that article because his son is my next-door neighbor. You know, not to mention that each time it happens, I just bought the house six years ago. I'm already underwater in the house because each time it happens, the value of my home goes down. So I couldn't sell it for what I paid for it six years ago. Now, I don't know how real estate works, but I know each time it happens, my property taxes go down, which means the value of my house has gone down each time it happens. So I don't know what y'all's can do, but I would certainly beg y'all's to do something quick and get it done before one of us loses our lives. Like I said, we've already had two. Thank God my kids are grown. But I still do have an 18-year-old there. You know, he's only been driving for two years and...
We get the incident with the school bus.
Yeah, there was, when he was, when he was a sophomore, the school bus stopped in front of the house and picked him up. He got on the bus. There was a car parked behind the bus, and somebody else came over the hill and hit the parked car that was, you know, stopped behind the bus. Wasn't a real bad accident, just a fender bender, but still. And like I said, I don't know how many has happened at the Thaddeus Hill crossroads and how many people have lost their lives. I've just been there six years. I would venture to say, you told me you've been there 30 years. I venture to say you've probably heard of or happened lots of deaths right there. I mean, I don't know what else is it going to take, guys?
The sad thing is, is when I contacted VDOT, when the XL driver lost his life, I plainly said something needs to be done before there's more fatalities. Well, unfortunately, a year later, there's another one. And it wasn't pretty to witness that.
You can't imagine the fear it is to sit in our living room. Just to sit in our living room to watch TV with your family. Y'all, probably ain't nobody in this room outside of the few of us sitting right here that even have to think about that. I have a, I have an old 1994 Ford Ranger that I park on the side of my driveway just in case they come off the road, they're going to hit that, they're going to hit that thing first. And literally, we leave it there just as a protection, so it's really scary.
Not to mention, it's pitch black.
Pitch black. Pitch black through there. There's no lighting through there at all. I mean, is there any questions you guys got for me? I mean, I'd love to stand here and answer them all night.
You can call the people I'm sure will want to talk.
I think Mr. Dalton here will respond.
I think the board has the right to ask VDOT to do a safety and speed study for that area. And VDOT will take that out of your road funds and conduct that study and bring those back if the board votes by resolution to ask that.
Yes, sir.
I see another problem there, and it is a growth area for the county. But as private residences come up for sale, you see a lot of folks interested in purchasing them to open up a business. And if a business opens up, then it means more people are turning in driveways and turning out. So it is a bad situation, and, but I see it getting worse.
So again, sir, with all due respect, put yourself in our position. I understand exactly what you're saying. If a business opens up there, and you've got a little bit more traffic, then certainly somebody's going to step in and lower that speed limit. That's a little bit of a slap in the face to us. We live there. That's where we lay our bed, our heads down at night. You know what I mean?
Yeah. And one last point. Several years ago, the residents along Airport Road wanted the speed limit reduced, and it got reduced, okay? Who do you think most of the first people that got tickets where they were from?
The people that lived there, no doubt.
Yes.
You know, and...
But they, people can learn, and it's just...
Sure, sure. You know, I don't, I don't think with the amount of... With the amount of highway that's there, I don't think lowering that speed limit by 10 mile an hour is going to affect the production of commerce.
Yeah.
Putting a flashing light in there does not stop traffic at a dead stop where you've got trucks on the lower side, on the upside of Thaddeus Hill, that have to sit there and try to reengage and get back up the hill.
A mile from the top of your side of Thaddeus Hill, the speed limit goes to 45, so...
A mile towards Galax?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, once you get past our 11 houses, you're right. That speed limit does drop down to 45, and those houses are well off the road as compared to ours. And like I said, sir, ours is 30 feet from the, from the white line. Our front doors are 30 feet from the white line. When they, when, when a driver makes a mistake, they have no recovery time. There's none before they're into our yards and last couple into our homes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we request the Highway Department to do a safety study there considering speed limits and...
Loss of life.
Lights or ruffles in the road.
That would be the three things that we would like to see. A flashing light at the crossroad of Thaddeus Hill, and I think it's Cranberry. Is that right?
Yes.
Cranberry. And speed limit lowered to 45, and then rumble strips on the downside after you crest the hill, some rumble strips down there, again, to get their attention. Because like I said, gentlemen, once, once, and not to mention, too, that the road, by design, tapers off towards the right for water to drain. That's by design, and if they make a mistake, whether it's on their cellphone, whether it's nodding out to sleep, whatever that is, their car is automatically going to drift to the right, and they have no recovery time. I thank you, gentlemen, for your time tonight. Please help us. Please help us. We have nowhere else to turn. Okay?
I understand.
We're all law-abiding citizens. We pay our taxes. We pay our county fees. We pay everything, and all we're asking is that you guys help protect our lives. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Mr. Chair...
Is that appropriate? Go ahead and make the motion and take this vote now. All right, we have a motion on the table.
I would second, I would second that motion. I know it's a troubled spot. My brother-in-law is a ex-lieutenant or retired lieutenant from State Police, and he's told me for years, it's a troubled spot. And our hands are tied in getting it done, but we got to go through VDOT to get it done because that's a state highway.
Not to interrupt, but my wife is upset right there.
Gentlemen, may I speak before you make the motion to add something to it? I have two minutes of time.
Do you withdraw your motions this time?
We're in the discussion phase of it anyway.
You're right.
I'd like to hear some public comments.
Yes.
All right, well, let's...
Is that appropriate?
Yes, step forward.
He didn't get to sign yet.
All right, sorry. What's your name?
My name is David Boatman. Owned the house that the truck went through in this same development, and owned the house where the car landed last time in the driveway. I understand that y'all can't control what VDOT does, but you can request.
Yes.
And having spoke to VDOT, your requests will carry more weight than ours. I understand that there's also a study being done with each fatality from Kim in Martinsville, as well as local VDOT members. So that should be underway, but another request to make sure that it happens. The white rumble strips is low cost, can be more added. The caution lights with the 35 mile an hour recommended speed over the hill, very minimal cost, can be solar powered added. As you go over the hill, what I would like to see is the rumble bar right beside the white lane as you would see typically on the interstate. You also see it on 52 and other locations where a shoulder only has eight inches of pavement before it turns into grass. That way, they would have a physical vibration to wake a driver up, make them pay back attention, and a noise to make them pay attention. Both of these are very minimal costs. If you're not out of the road, it's not going to bother anyone. My second request from y'all would be to direct the sheriff's office to please set up a radar over top of that hill. We can request that, but we don't have a lot of weight because we don't write their checks. Y'all control the budget with them, have a little more pull with them. If you could, please, just request the sheriff's office. Welcome to set in my driveway. I've made that known to many deputies. They've got the line of sight and could get people to understand that as you come over that hill, a few people getting pulled over is going to resonate through the area. They're going to understand that 70 miles an hour plus is not acceptable topping that hill. If a school bus does stop for children there, you have no sight distance to stop at the speeds they're going. And the mail people, delivering the mail, are afraid to death to stop at those houses because there's nowhere to get out of the road. My house, speaking of commercial properties, has already been approved for a light commercial entrance of 25 cars a day. If you can't top that hill and even turn in the driveway without getting hit or wrecking, getting the horn blown at you or people upset because they run up on you very fast, that's something that's been approved already. All I have to do is sign the papers for it, and I have a light commercial entrance. That should not be available there, even though there is sight distance. Common sense should be able to say, no business down through there. You can't see them when they're turning in or turning out. So in y'all's resolution, what y'all are asking for, please add white bar rumbles, flashing lights at this time, and the side strip beside the white line to wake drivers up and maybe have a little, just another second or two to correct that car because there's only about nine inches total between, into the asphalt and they're in the culvert. There's nothing we can do as far as drainage as homeowners to alleviate that culvert unless we put pipe down and run them straight into the house. And once again, we would have to incur serious costs and get VDOT approval for that. You can ask the sheriff's office to do some radar there. I'm not one that loves radar anywhere because I, like anyone else, you know, exceed the speed limit a little bit going down a hill, up a hill. But I feel like it's better served instead of the officer sitting at the bottom of the hill where people gain speed naturally. That's something you can hardly avoid running a couple of miles over going down a steep hill. But when you top a hill, to be topping it at 65, 70 miles an hour, that is a ticket that people need to get, to get their attention. If y'all would please add that in y'all's request, we would appreciate it, and I think it would help us out a lot.
All right. White bar rumble, the sheriff's department, and...
The rumble strip right beside the white line. As you would see on the interstate, they just completed one on 52 on a soft shoulder. We don't have anywhere to widen our shoulder. I would gladly give them all of my front yard if I thought it would help and just walk out the back door, but there's just nowhere to go with it. If that rumble wakes them up when they hit over that white line, you have the vibration and the sound, and it'll get their attention. And while we can request it with Martinsville, a letter from y'all, just a simple letter, signed by y'all, will carry enough weight that they said, have told me privately, something will happen. Those expenses are very minimal. There's not a big study to be done. It's simply a lane closure. Add them. Next day, you're done. So please help us out with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Boatman.
Mr. Chairman, could I modify my motion?
Yes.
Modify my, that one has been made a second, if you could...
I withdraw my second. All right, so you...
Modify your motion.
All right. And request the Highway Department can consider installation of the rumble strips on the outside of the road there to alarm people to get back on the highway and that we petition the Carroll County Sheriff's Department to run radar there. You'll probably catch half the board, I guarantee you, but that's where it is. All right?
Stop over for dinner if they did.
And the Highway Department, their job is safety, but with hills trucking over there is, they have addiction of the time just pulling onto that highway and so forth in consideration of traffic lights in vicinity of hills trucking, and you got the United Methodist Church there, and on the other side of the road is some more.
Mount Rogers.
Yeah. And include those three things in there.
All right, I have Bob's adjustment in his motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. In discussion.
Yes, I would also like to, just to add to his motion, that we contact Virginia State Police. They, they have a lot of jurisdiction on that road. And request from them that we have more patrols and we have more radar in that area to try to slow people down. And I'm in total agreeance of everything that he said as far as flashing lights, rumble strips, rumble strips on the side of the road. Yes, it is a huge problem.
45 mile an hour speed limit, too.
Yep, and request VDOT, get on with this. Get on with it. Don't put it off no longer. We've had two fatalities in the last couple of years.
I'm in agreement to include the 45 mile an hour speed limit and also the Virginia State Police.
Yes, I mean, let's get them all involved over there, and let's try to slow it down. It is a problem area.
And a flashing light at the top of Thaddeus Hill. Because that'll draw attention, a flashing light.
Yes.
Mr. Durbin?
So I think we have a motion from...
So I think we have a motion from Mr. Martin.
I think we do.
That's been seconded to request a speed study to consider changes to the speed limits or addition of safety devices to include without limitation, white bar rumble strips, flashing lights, or other safety measures. I think that's the motion that I originally heard.
Okay.
And then there's a motion to amend that motion from Mr. Webb to add contacting Virginia State Police.
Yes.
So you'd be looking for a second on Mr. Webb's motion to modify. And then you vote on Mr. Webb's motion and then vote on the amended motion if it passes.
Okay.
So is there...
I'm sorry.
I'll second Mr. Webb's motion also.
All right, I have a motion and a second on Mr. Webb's motion. Any discussion on that? All right, I'll start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, now we'll go back to the original motion.
The amended motion.
Amended motion.
Amended.
Motion, so we still in the discussion stage on that, correct? Okay.
Right.
Anybody else have anything to say on that?
I would just add that my wife has spoke to Lisa Hughes with VDOT on both. So that would be a person that's familiar with...
Yep, we know Lisa. So she comes here fairly frequent. All right, I have a motion and second, no further discussion. Call for your vote. Joe?
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Just wanted to let everybody know our timer is not working. Try to keep yourself to three minutes if possible. Or try to keep yourself to three minutes.
I was timed and it was about two and a half minutes.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your kindness.
All right, Tracy Moore?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you. And the reason I'm coming tonight is to talk to you about the county employees. You know, it's been expressed a lot, a concern with a lot of citizens, you know, the morale of the employees of Carroll County right now. And they, I feel that the workers, they come to work every day not only feared for their jobs, but just the plain fact of uncertainty, you know. And I understand we're going through a major transition right now and, you know, they're feeling it. So I talked to a lot of people and a lot of people, it's very important to them how our employees are every day. How can they be efficient if they're feared for their stuff? So I think they're the backbone of our community. And the turnover of summer has been really huge in a lot of the departments. And we've all seen that, you know, like I said, the morale. But I feel that employees have worked months, seen employees leave, hiring and pay freezes put in place, and all the negative rumors surrounding our government. And I'm not sure if one of the new boards that y'all are coming up with is going to look into that, you know, just to maybe help some positivities in it, you know, with the salaries and the hiring of the new employees to fill the open positions. But I feel that this issue needs addressed. That's why I'm here tonight, speaking on behalf of a lot of citizens that have come to me with it, you know, that it's very important to them. And I know it's important to y'all also. I just wanted to, you know, re-clarify it, I guess. But we're training our employees and then they're going to other places to work, you know. Our EMS is short-staffed right now and maintenance also. And, you know, if we don't have people to run in the ambulances, then our citizens, you know, they're not being taken care of, you know. And that's a major issue. And, you know, one time, if we don't have the maintenance, you know, the grass starts getting higher at the fair next week and trash piles up, we're going to have a lot of phone calls come in, you know. So I just, I'd like to see that everybody in Carroll County and departments, you know, I know Mr. Dalton and you, the board, have got a lot of things going on right now and a lot of tough decisions. I just come tonight for the employees of county. Just maybe there's something you can do to just give them a little morale boost or a little kick in the step. And I'd like to see this issue as important as every issue which that's a challenge right now. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Jimmy Strickland?
I was going to speak on the traffic situation with 58, but I think it's all been covered. I don't think I've added anything to it.
All right, thank you. David Hancock?
Yes. Before we get started, I'd like to know, back when I moved there, they was going to full lane, clean that way. But money come up short and Northern Virginia got it. We no longer hear about the other road getting full lane. And at that time, they said there was too much traffic on it. I think they counted 18,000 vehicles moved on it each day at that time. But like, you know, the others are asking for the traffic light. I'd like to see the rubbles on the side of the road like you got over Whiffle. Were really stout ones that jerk you when you get on them because those people need to know they're getting off the road. And once they get off the first top of the hill, they're not getting back out because they're going to hit a cover. And it's going to be havoc when they do. So I'd just like to see something done right away with that area. They got it 45 on down the road. Why not extend it to the top of Fattis Hill and have a flashing light? If you've got any questions?
Agree with you.
There you go. Thank you. That's all the citizens that have signed up to speak. Let's move on to payment invoices. Do I have a motion to pay for the invoices?
Make a motion that we approve the payroll and accounts receivable invoices.
Thank you, I left out the payroll.
Gentlemen, thank you all again for your time. We appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All right, start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Joe Neil?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, excuse me, I'm looking. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of previous meetings.
All right, do I have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Any discussion? Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, now do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda sections A and B.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second?
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
The social service appropriation...
It's $100. It's an insurance recovery thing.
Oh, okay.
It's a hundred and some dollars. Emergency service appropriation is a similar, it's $3,000 something for its vehicle type of stuff. All right, have... Any more discussion? All right, Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Bob?
And yes.
All right. Let's move on to new business. We've got waste industries update.
Thank you all for having me again. Just want to give you an update on the can deliveries. As of last Friday, all of them was delivered except maybe 15, 20. Some customers called and canceled because they can't set the cans at their HOAs at the end of the road where they're at. So we're going to try to help them get them taken care of. We're trying to figure out a way to deal with the HOAs and go seal them or do something to maybe do something there. But the good news is with them 15, 16 people, we've got like 60, 65 new customers. So that's going to help the county alleviate some problems at the landfill. And I think it'll also help the county look cleaner. So everything's been delivered. I think we've got maybe 15, 20 to personally hand-deliver, but everything else has been delivered. So everything went very well. And I don't know if you noticed the cans out there, but they're very noticeable. So if anybody's got any questions, I'm here to answer.
I was approached by a couple of different citizens.
Right.
One of them owns a trailer park, I think, over off of Poplar Knobs, some in that area.
Right.
And he was really concerned about the way it was handled. And a lot of his customers really didn't get notification. And I mean customers, people live in his trailer park that have trash service, didn't get notification that they... Of what was going on. And he was really concerned about that. And then he was also concerned because, and he did say he realized that there was a limit on the number of bags, but he had a bag fall out of a can.
Right.
And he said they left it set and didn't pick it up. And he really was upset with that.
Okay.
And his largest concern was that there was not enough communication about how this was going to work before it transpired.
We did send out a bunch of letters. And then we also made blast calls.
Okay.
If the people's cellphone, if they went from, you know, landline to cellphone or something, that happened. And then also, we have, y'all have, we still have probably about 30, 40 customers in this area still uses a P.O. box.
Okay.
So that causes a problem there too. But I will check in on that and maybe give... Is the owner of the trailer park, does he pay for everybody's trash?
He didn't express that to me in any way. He just said that he had several people in the park that weren't sure of how to handle it when it... He had the cans, but didn't know how to handle the... How they needed to be placed out and those kind of things.
Okay. And then we can call them and I'll put it up on our website so they can look at that and see.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you all. Anything else? Well, thank you all very much. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hillsville Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Spangler?
Good evening. Most of you know me. I'm Donnie Spangler, Chief of Hillsville Fire Department. Hope everybody got a letter about what we're sort of asking for here. Of course, sadly, we had an accident with one of our pieces apparatus and we've been trying to figure out a way to replace that. If everybody read the letter, of course, we don't want to put any more burden on the county or Hillsville Fire Department. We would like to get, one of the engines we have is paid by ATL, which is the Aid to Locality Fund that we get from the state and pay that truck off. And of course, that'll get that off the county debt. With that, that's the first thing, if you can give us permission to do that. And the second thing is, is when we decide or see what we can purchase to replace that truck, is use the Aid to Locality Fund to make that payment and not to exceed what we get from that.
I don't have an issue with that. I mean, I think that's...
It really is not. I mean, it's from the state, which if...
It's like you said, it's taken...
With ATL, it's state money comes in to provide for training and equipment.
It's going to take a lot of, it will take a little bit of a burden off of us if you go ahead and pay that.
And what we planned on after that is actually getting that, the actual loan in Hillsville Fire Department's name so it's not on y'all's debt load here in the county. But we would like to say that it would be, you know, it would be titled to the county, of course. And, but we would just like to use the ATL fund to make the payment with.
Any other question? Did the letter explain enough? I mean...
I'd just like to make a statement that these guys work hard. I was a member of them from '78 to '98. And they, I've worked real close with Donnie on this ever since the accident. And they don't want to put a burden on the citizens of Carroll County. And I think they've come up with a great plan to alleviate a debt that we owe and a great plan to replace the vehicle that they lost with no more expense to the county. And I commend those guys for that. And I'm all in favor.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to accept this proposal or not? Do we need to wait?
Probably also before we get to, I'd probably need some help as far as how do we need to pay that loan off? Because it's through the IDA. So we need help as far as what we need to do to get that taken care of, so.
Has the fire truck been procured? Has it gone through the procurement process?
Yeah, we've got the insurance money and all that. It's all been taken care of.
But to buy a...
No, no. No, we haven't found anything yet. We just want to ask for permission once we do that to be able to use the ATL fund.
But you'd be going through the normal procurement process?
Yes.
I suppose the order work with...
County administrator.
Talk with select, try to get the details of it worked out. Would that be the appropriate way to go?
Push this button. What we, I think we really need to do is, number one, just refer it over to the whole matter to the Budget Committee. And then you work out the details of how to go about, we can bring the loan document in from the IDA. How much it is, how much is left, and how much the ATL money. And we can work out how much they can actually borrow and be covered by the annual ATL money so that it would be covered. And look at those specs too, so that we can look at it. I don't know if Donnie's plan, or the Fire Department's wanting a new truck or a used truck or... I know they want to search a different kind of vehicle than the one that was wrecked. It's a rescue pumper or some other kind...
That is correct. We're looking at demo pieces apparatus. We know we cannot afford to spec one out and buy a new piece of apparatus. That's probably not going to happen. The closest thing to that is getting a demo apparatus that's out for show for some of the companies. And we found a couple that's could be in our price range, looking at the, which you look, we've done a look through First National Republic as far as financing and getting the rate at 3.57. I think that's what we've got at lowest through us. So no, we can't, we're not going to be able to spec one out and buy a brand-new piece of apparatus, no. But we are looking at demo pieces of equipment that's out there for some of these fire companies for show. And we can get the actual warranty with that as well, so.
So it sounds like they just need...
Yeah, we just refer it to the Budget Committee. Yep. To the county administrator.
Get all the documents together and go from there?
Yep.
Donnie, can you get everything together for us? And we'll meet later this week or first of the week so we can get this thing moving?
That would be awesome, yes. Anybody else got any questions?
Thank you, Don.
All right, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
All right, VA-COPE, VA-CORP agreement. See if I had a chance to look at that. Need a vote to approve the VA-CORP agreement?
I make a motion that we accept the VA-CORP renewal, membership renewal?
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the renewal of what was estimated to be in the budget will require an additional appropriation to different departments. I don't know if y'all have that up there with you or not, but we recommend approval and amending so that we were good with all the appropriations so everybody will not be underfunded. Thank you.
So would you be willing to adjust your amendment to, I mean, your motion to cover that?
Yes, sir, I will.
And I've amended my second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? After you had an opportunity to look at this? All right, start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littler?
Yes.
Bob? And yes.
Have these, have some of these committee appointments, have they been advertised? And have we had any, other than the ones that we have there? All right, I'll just make a motion. Tom Littrell to Airport. There'd be a second for that?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Upside.
Rob, Bob?
Do you know anything about airplanes? I mean.
He knows about, my laser, that should work.
All right, then I vote yes.
All right. The, the others, there's some others in here that pertain specifically to the County Administrator. Do that as a block motion. If that works for everybody, just make it County Administrator. And then we'll let Crystal figure out that.
Mr. Chairman, instead of, as y'all have in the past, name a specific person, I'd ask that you just name the County Administrator to act in all those positions, and whoever's here can do it then.
I make a motion that we name the County Administrator to fill the positions that are vacated. And that's probably is the V I A, um, Bracida, C P N T, uh, this Chief Leo, Crossroads, District Three Alternate, M R P D C, New River Regional Water Authority, Solid Waste Authority in the Wired Road.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So move.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, there's, uh, we haven't got any, uh, for the New River Jail Alternates? No. I guess we'll just pass that by then. How about Social Services? That's going to be September thirtieth, so I guess we can wait on that one. All right, let's move to the Equal Opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, if you would, before you move on, deal with the I D A issue or E D A issue.
All right, appointment. Oh, did I miss it?
No, that's right.
Did I miss it? Where am I?
It's not open.
All right, so what do I need to do? Just a motion?
Yes. The County Administrator as the Executive Director of the I D A.
Oh, 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 sorry. That went over my head. All right, do I have a motion that the County Administrator be, the Executive Director of the E D A?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Start with you, Bob.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Now we can go to the Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. Everyone had an opportunity to look at that?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the Equal Opportunity Plan.
All right, do I have a second?
I do.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? What this does, this allows us to, since we have this plan in place, it allows us to receive GRET funding in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Department of Justice. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. This is a requirement for us for the federal funding.
All right, have a motion. Any more discussion? Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
And yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, the C S A audit. This requires no action on our part, correct?
No action, it's just a notification that that's going to happen, that they do an intensive look at your C S A expenditures and hopefully that if we've got all our i's dotted and t's crossed, that we'll come out okay.
Sounds good to me. All right, resolution on the gas tax. Everybody had an opportunity to look at that and is familiar with this?
Well, I think we either ought to pass it or we ought to move it interstate eighty-one a little closer to Carroll County.
Sounds like a good, good idea. So is that in the form of a motion?
It is, yes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, that leaves, we have one other resolution. Robbie, would you read that resolution?
No.
Entertain it.
Whereas Stephen B. Truitt was named County Administrator and began employment with Carroll County, Virginia on September twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, and whereas during his tenure, Mr. Truitt has worked tirelessly on, on bringing economic development prospects to the county, and whereas Mr. Truitt has made huge strides in the Woodlong School Revitalization Project, and whereas Mr. Truitt has made significant contributions in the Gigabeam Wireless Internet Project, bringing service to underserved areas within the county, and whereas Mr. Truitt is instrumental in the reconstruction of the Carroll County website, making it more user friendly, and whereas Mr. Truitt's final working day for the county is August sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas the Board wishes to extend our sincere best wishes for his future endeavors, and now therefore be it resolved that the Carroll, the County of Carroll recognizes and appreciates Mr. Stephen B. Truitt's service to the county.
All right. I'm able to approve the resolution.
All right, I have a motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All right, calling for the questions. Start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip? I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Bob?
And yes.
Takes us down to old business, processing facility.
Mr. Chairman, at your last meeting, you had a presentation. The request should have been at the last meeting is allow the processing group to make an application for D H C D funding on behalf of the county, and they have a consultant that will do so. So we need a motion to approve that, and we'll have a public hearing and some other things associated with that.
So we, we will need a motion for the public hearing and to approve that together?
I think at this point in time, the motion to allow them to make application and we sign those applications will be sufficient. They will bring the public hearing notices to us.
Okay.
And we'll advertise them as such.
All right, do I have a motion?
Some of.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All right, have a motion and a second. Start with you, Bob. Excuse me, any discussion?
Do they have a deadline of September or something?
Yes, sir.
So time's a good moment if we're doing this.
All right, Bob, I'm going to start with you.
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Robbie?
Yes.
I say yes. Phillip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, the Switch Creek Levels Creek Project. That doesn't take any action on our part, does it? Just a more of an informational.
I think they're asking, do we have any intentions to do the final phase of it? My suggestion is tell them that we are finished.
Everybody agree with that? So I guess we should take that and, and a motion. Is there a motion, a motion to let them know that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize County Administrator to tell this agency that we are finished with the project.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? This has been, how, this is, how long has it been?
Two thousand.
Twenty years?
When it started.
How long?
Two thousand one.
Two thousand one. So it's been going on a long time. They finished up everything that, best of my knowledge, anyway. All right.
They've requested that the watershed sponsors get together over the next few months to discuss the futures, so I guess this is our part of discussion.
All right, works for me. All right, Joe, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could bring one issue before the board? Yes. The, um, the Representatives of Charter Cable, Charter Spectrum Cable, and myself have been negotiating some final language to the renewal of the franchise agreement. Just want to advise the board that I think we're at the point now where we can have a public hearing on that. So I would be requesting a motion for public hearing at the September ninth meeting of the board.
All right, do I have a motion to set up a public hearing for the franchise?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, start with you, Joe.
Yes.
Phillip?
Yes.
I say yes. Robbie?
Yes.
Dr. Littrell?
Yes.
And yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, with board member comments. How long we going to talk, Bob? It's on you.
All right, short and sweet. The, uh, I, I really think that the board accomplished several things working with Saleil Dalton. Sadly, I can't tell you about because it's an executive session. County is in a really tough, tight financial situation, and we've agreed on a course of action, and I think it'll be successful, and the county will come out ahead in short term, long term, and that's it.
Dr. Littrell?
I had a citizen ask me about a question that I couldn't answer, and I talked to Saleil about it, and he suggested that I make a comment during citizens' time, excuse me, during supervisors' time, that I, that I, that we allow the staff to work on this particular question. And so that, I know that's kind of open-ended, but anyway, I would like to be able to do that. And I'll get together with Saleil and discuss it with him. I appreciate him being on board and what the staff is doing, and glad all the citizens were here tonight to express their concerns, and it's always good to hear what's going on, on the other side of the podium here.
Thank you, Dr. Littrell. Robbie?
I do thank everyone for being here tonight. I think all the comments that we had about the traffic problems on fifty-eight, it is something that needs to be addressed, and hopefully we can get V D O T to, to do a study and come up with some ideas to make some changes over there. You know, we have our county fair coming up in a couple of weeks, and it's a big thing for the county, and, uh, it's just a, a huge event that I think we should support all we can. And in connection with that, it's also Breastfeeding Month, Awareness Month. And with that being said, at the county fair, the Health Department's going to provide a, have a unit there for the use to feed and change babies, and there's also going to be representatives from Twin County Regional Hospital and Carroll Emergency Services. The Home Health is going to have representatives over, and each of them is going to have their own information to pass out. I think there's going to be some blood pressure checks going on, and maybe some C P R training quickly being done. Just, uh, if, if you're out at the fair, encourage anybody you know to go by and, and visit the little health corner they're going to have, so. It's something that I don't think we've had before, so. And it's just, it's been a real pleasure to, to work with this board and work for the people of this county, and I truly enjoy it. I guess that's about it.
Thank you, Robbie.
Phillip?
Well, I think everybody's coming out and talking about the employees of being concerned about their jobs. I know in tough times, the budget's tight, money's tight, we're looking at ways to try to get everything in line, but I don't want anybody to be threatened that they're just going to lose their job. We appreciate the employees and the job they're doing, and want them to know that I'll never do anything and try to cause anyone to lose their job. We appreciate the work they're doing. And I just thank the board for working together like they do, and, and we have our differences, but we always come together, and nobody comes out mad. We discuss things, and, and I think we get along pretty good most of the time, but we are definitely money shortage, and I want everybody to know that and work with us and understand, and we thank everybody for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip. Joe?
Thank you. First thing, I need to apologize for missing a meeting last month, or in June, and, uh, this is what bothers me, is I read my name in the paper that I'm a conspirator, that I laid out just not to vote and, and all this sort of things. I've been called everything in the last eighteen, nineteen months on this board, except my name. And I want, I want you all to know, I'm not conspiring against anyone. I'm doing the best I can. It's amazing what I have learned in nineteen months about Carroll County as a board member. But please, if you have a problem with me, don't hotline me. Don't tell me that I'm a dictator, I'm a communist, or I'm a whatever. Please come in contact with me and talk to me, and let me understand where you're coming from, and I'll explain to you where I'm coming from. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. This county is in, and, and I'm going to say serious trouble. We are in serious trouble as far as finances go, and we are working. I know the six of us sitting up here are working as hard as we can, and to, to go back to what Mr. Moore said and, and, and go back to what Mr. McColl said, we're not trying to scare anybody about their job. We've taken actions in the past twelve months to try to slow down the bleeding, try to slow down and get a grip on what's going on in this county. And, you know, my, my only suggestion is to those people that are afraid of their job, you might not be doing your job. If you're doing your job, you don't have nothing to be afraid of, in my view, and I'm not speaking for the other five members on this board. You don't have anything to be afraid of. I'll be the first one to stand up and protect you. But it's tough right now. We've, we've, Mr. Dalton's come on board with us as interim administrator, and I'm not supposed to mention the name, I'm sorry. But we have discovered a lot of things that's been going on in this county for a lot of years that has led us to the point that we are right now, and we are trying, trying very hard to get a grip on it, to get this thing back and going like it should be going, and everybody in this county's happy. Now, can we make everybody happy? No, there's no way, you know? But my viewpoint is we got to get a grip on what we're doing as a county to get this thing back right and get it back going the way it needs to be going and prosper. That's my whole plan, is this county to get back on its feet and prosper with what resources we do have. Again, I appreciate everybody coming up and speaking, and I appreciate the concerns of the citizens of this county, a lot of things we can't control, but we're going to help you. We're going to do what we can to help you. And again, to the, to the employees of this county, hang on, hang on. It's not going to be total chaos forever. It's, we've got plans in place, and when things start working in, in the way it should be, it's going to be okay. and when things start working in, in the way it should be, it's going to be okay. And again, I apologize for missing the June meeting. It wasn't, it wasn't of my plan to miss it, but things come about. And hang in there with us, guys. Hang in there with us. That's all I can say. It ain't easy. It ain't easy. Thank you, Rex.
Thank you, board members. It has been trying times. It's been tough. It's been tough on every single thing that I've looked at. If I can point out how, it's kind of like the county was in a poker game and we tried to draw to an inside straight. We didn't hit it. So that's where we are at this point in time. I mean, and we have to, it's going to be tough going down the road too. It's not getting any better. We have to make adjustments. We've got great employees. They do great jobs for us. I've not had a single person not give me the information that I've needed or asked for, in the same way with the rest of the board. But that's on the worst part of it. Now let's talk about the good parts. The county fair, you can't find a better deal anywhere around. You know, I suggest everyone get out there and if you're a volunteer, get out there and volunteer with the county. I know Mr. Newman back there does it a whole lot, gets out there and works with the kids a whole lot. And I know, and the Sheriff's Department gets out there and spends a lot of time out there making sure our folks are safe when they cross the street to go to the farmer's market. And all the employees spend thousands, around a thousand hours working at, at the, at the county fair. It takes a lot of work. A lot of the volunteer groups are aging, so they're not participating like they used to. So if anybody wants to come out there and collect money for tickets, come right over there and sit right next to me. And I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and I appreciate what you do for the county and have a good night. Like, well, excuse me, I'm about to end it. I have, this, since we made some, we have made changes in, in our presentation and how we do things, it's the County Administrator's time to make comments. Sorry about that.
I always want the last word.
I understand that.
I apologize for missing the last meeting or the first, or maybe the first meeting that I was supposed to be here. But I had previous obligations that I'd already paid for before I agreed to come to work here. We're learning a lot. I've spoken with just about all the staff. I think we're making, and constitutional officers and other people. I think we've made great strides in at least talking back and forth now. We hope to do better. We've all agreed to work for the best of the county instead of our own personal wishes. So thank you. I beg your indulgence. We're, I thought I knew a lot, but I, obviously I didn't know a lot. I've learned a lot in the last month and expected to learn a lot more in the next few months, but thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And that's what it's all about. It's what the best interest of Carroll County. That's what we're trying to look for. Now I don't think you'll find a board member that disagrees with that. All right, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.